So with that, it's 4:30 and today in our work session, we are going to hear from the Finance Department regarding a fiscal year 2122 budget development update. And so I will call this meeting to order on November 24, 2020, this work session of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board. With that, Dr. Gonzalez, would you like to introduce our presenters?
There, I had to unmute myself. I apologize. I started off speaking into a muted computer.
If you had a better money song than I.
I'll have to think on that one just a little bit more. But thank you, President Sullivan and members of the Governing Board, CEC and guests. Today we begin this work session, as you said, with a discussion on money and what it looks like for Maricopa and planning for the next fiscal year. Just a couple of things as a reminder that we are following a very different process this year, one that's certainly more inclusive and collaborative in nature. And it also brings the discussion to the Governing Board much sooner than in the past. And so there are already many hands and thoughts into this. And of course, none of it is written in stone just yet because some of it will largely depend on what enrollment will look like for the spring semester. So with that, I'd like to turn it over.
Yeah, I'm going to interrupt you though, because in my haste to recite five money song titles, I forgot to call roll.
Yes.
All right.
Might indicate what kind of a week I've had already. But so I apologize for interrupting, but I do need to call board roll. So thank you. First, Jalissa, our Student Advisory Trustee, are you present? Thank you. I know Mr. Hendricks is not in attendance for our work session this afternoon. Mrs. McGrath. I'll move on. Dr. Norene.
I'm here. And it was payday today. So you know, it is a money theme.
Isn't there another song with payday in it too? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Johnny Cash, we'll just go with him.
Yeah, there you go. We're covering all genres of that. Mr. Sarr.
I'm here.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
I'm here and my money song is Money, 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 Money from Cabaret.
Woo, good one. Okay. Ms. Nguyen.
I'm here.
With my presence, I'll go back. Mrs. McGrath, I note her on the attendee list.
She's also on the computer screen.
Right. Perhaps she's stepped away. But with that, I will call attendance for the board meeting with five board members present. And Ms. Munoz also in attendance. And if Mrs., I will continue to comment on Mrs. McGrath as we go through. And so Elsa will make note of her presence as she speaks for the first time. Okay?
Okay.
Alrighty. So thank you, everyone, for tolerating my missteps here this morning, this afternoon. So with that, again, back to you, Dr. Gonzalez, and I apologize.
Not a problem. It gave me time to think about a money song though. And the one that came to my mind was Mo Money, Mo Problems by the Victoria PIG. I don't know if you guys listen to that sort of music, but it's quite a difference going from the ABBA one that you talked about.
There you go, opposite sides. And I'm really interested what Song Gary and crew might offer when they get to talk. But with that, again, back to you, back to Gonzalez.
We shall see. I'm going to turn it over to him right now. Take it away, Gary.
Well, thank you, Chancellor. I just watch the money. I don't sing it. Maybe something will occur to me. President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, colleagues and guests, I'm Gary Yacuinto. I am the CFO for the district. Do have a presentation, but before I launch into the body of the presentation, I do have a few preparatory comments I'd like to make. First, we're presenting a conservative approach to the FY 2122 budget. It is designed at this point to achieve a balanced budget over the next two budget cycles. To get there, given the sharp decline in tuition revenue this year that we are experiencing, we're proposing a 3% budget reduction in the FY 2122 general fund operating budgets. I might also add at this point that we have not yet integrated the compensation philosophy into the FY 2122 budget. But having said that, as the Chancellor indicated, we are at an early stage in developing next year's budget. And as he pointed out, we're very much ahead of last year's budget efforts as we promised the board we would be. But with the early first look, there remains risk and uncertainty in how the remainder of this fiscal year plays out. Will enrollment be better? Will it be worse than the fall semester decline of 15%? So what we present today will likely change as we know more about what the immediate future looks like. And to let you know, as we had mentioned previously, we're planning updated presentations to you in January and then again in March or April. So I do have with me today on the call, Kim Grunio, who is the District Controller, and Shari Zara, Chief of Financial Planning and Budget, to help any questions that you might have. And Mrs. Sullivan, while we typically would go through the entire presentation before turning to questions, I realize that there may be times, given the material that's being presented, where board members would like to interject and ask questions. I'd ask board members and you, President Sullivan, to feel free to interject or stop me at any time, and I'd be happy to answer questions. So also, if we could move on, I'm sorry.
No, I've said thank you. So we'll try to go through the rotation like usual. But if anyone does have a let's stop and discuss question that won't last, we can't wait until the end, then we'll go ahead with that. So thank you again. Go ahead.
Thank you. So here's what we intend to cover today, this afternoon. First, I have a few diagrams that provide current and historical data as a base as we move forward. Looking next at the FY 2122 general fund, we'll go through assumptions. I'll present the budget theme. I have several graphs that show our deficit spending over the last couple of years and how we intend to close the gap. And then, as I mentioned, we're looking at a 3% budget reduction in the general fund. And we do have a chart that shows where we intend to get and achieve those cost savings by category. Then we have a couple of good news stories. Proposition 301, sales tax collections are trending way above what they were last year. And so our share of sales tax collections dedicated for Proposition 301 purposes, workforce type activities is, has increased as well, and we'll show those projections. And then again, the passage of Prop 207 provides an additional new revenue stream for us for dedicated purposes for workforce development, job training, technology education and STEM education. I have a slide on capital showing where our capital fund is and where it's headed. And then there is a slide showing the status of the CARES Act expenditures. And then finally, I'll close with one slide on the expenditure limit. So Elsa, if we could move on to the next slide. Okay, this chart shows distribution of projected general fund revenues for this fiscal year, FY 2021. I note that the data does not include the fund balance, but there are a few interesting details that are worth pointing out and mentioning. We have two sources of revenue, property taxes and tuition, that comprise the vast majority of general fund revenues. Those two sources combined to account for 98% of our general fund revenue. There are some other sources as well, interest earnings and some other things, but they're very minor. The story the chart does not tell is that since our tuition revenue has generally been declining over the past several years, the general fund has become ever more dependent on property taxes to fund operations. As the chart shows, property taxes plus the SRP in lieu tax, which is essentially a property tax, is estimated to produce 75% of general fund revenue this year. And this is an increase from last year's 68%. Conversely, the proportion from tuition has declined from 28% to 23%, owing again to the large decline in enrollment this year. Next slide, please. So the previous slide showed revenues. This slide shows the distribution of general fund budgeted expenditures for fiscal, for this fiscal year, FY 21. Unsurprisingly, salaries, wages and benefits comprise the largest share of the budget at 73%. Contractual services comprise about 10%, other operating expenditures 15%. And the new expenditures approved by the Governing Board for this fiscal year, that is the student opportunity grants, the tuition discounts, about 2%. These ratios, other than the new expenditures category, remain fairly stable from year to year. Next slide. Historic enrollment. So this slide shows historic enrollment since fiscal year 2010. And there are a few items here to point out. First, projected enrollment this fiscal year, the far right bar for fiscal year 21, is lower than any other year since 2010. Clearly, the sharp decline this year is due to the pandemic. However, look at the graph, you can also see that enrollment has steadily declined since 2011, with the exception of FY 20, which increased only slightly over the previous year, fiscal year 2019. And, and this will, this will have some implications as we look at that last slide on the expenditure limitation. Next slide, please, Elsa. FY 2122 budget assumptions. So what do we have built in to our assumptions in projecting for the FY 22 budget? First of all, this year, fiscal year 21, we have built in a 15% decline in tuition for the year. Then we are leaving it flat at that level for fiscal year 22. General fund reserve, that is the end balance for the general fund, is projected to decrease by 86% from the end of fiscal year 20, that is 63020, where it was standing at about 115 million, all the way down to 16.4 million by the end of fiscal year 22, 63022. And that's assuming no budget reductions. I mentioned 3% budget reduction. That decline down to 16.4 million in the end balance assumes no budget reductions. In that event, this would leave a primary reserve of the rainy day fund, approximately $70 million, plus the general fund end balance, as I mentioned, of 16.4 million, at a 12% reserve cushion, which is only about one and a half months of monthly budgeted expenditures. And the rule of thumb is that we should have somewhere between three to six months of expenditures in the primary reserve. Our primary reserve target is 16% for FY 22. We're not going to reach quite that level, but we're going to come very close. And that's a little more than two months' reserve. And it is at, again, the low end of what we would hope to eventually achieve. With the 3% budget reduction for FY 22, we'd be able to make substantial progress in reaching that 16% target. Reducing by 3% or $21.6 million from the current budget would take us to a projected combined reserve of 15.25%. And the plan is to make additional progress toward the 16% target in fiscal year 23 and beyond, as we grow our way out of the effects of the pandemic. Also included in our revenue, in our revenue projections, is an increase in property tax levy of 13.4 million resulting from levy on the value of new construction in the county. And I'll also mention, as we do in our presentations on the budget, there are always revenue enhancement options to consider, tuition increases and property tax increases to support new expenditures. And again, those rule of thumb comparisons, looking at tuition for every 1% increase in our tuition rates, we will generate about $1.5 million of additional revenue. And property tax for every one penny increase in our primary property tax, that would generate $4.9 million in additional revenue. At this time, we are not proposing that there be increases in tuition or property taxes. But as we continue to discuss the budget, consider other options, we may have other proposals and ideas that we may together look at and consider. Next slide, please. A budget theme, and you've seen this slide previously, financial sustainability and safety. A sustainable, a sustainable budget is one that is structurally balanced and avoids budget deficits. In other words, ongoing investments do not exceed ongoing revenues. And one-time resources may be matched against a one-time investments, but we would avoid applying those one-time resources toward any ongoing expenses. That's what creates the spending deficit situation that we're currently faced with. And by safety, we mean we should have a safety net to meet unexpected contingencies like, I'll give you an example, several years ago, there was a cyber attack on the district and that cost the district some $20 to $30 million to remedy. It is events like that that we don't anticipate for which we need that reserve in an emergency situation. Again, to reiterate, we're recommending a primary fund target reserve of 16% of budget expenditures, equal to about two months of operating budget. And again, this is at the low end of the three to six month rule of thumb. And just to remind you again, the primary reserve, we mean the combination of the $70 million rainy day fund plus the general fund end balance reserve. Next slide, please. Okay, we're going to turn to some slides here that are important ones in that they are graphical representations of our current general fund situation and what we hope to achieve in balancing the budget with a budget reduction in fiscal year 22, as well as our capacity, we believe we're going to have capacity for new spending once we balance our budget and get beyond fiscal year 23. So this first slide in a three-slide suite shows the general fund budget trajectory based on the decline in tuition this year and nominal growth in budget expenditures in fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23. The red line, which is the uppermost line, is adopted budgeted expenditures from, approved by the board, from fiscal year 17 through fiscal year 21, and then projections of budgeted expenditures for fiscal year 22 and 23. Again, this graph shows those expenditures without any budget reductions. It does include about $5.2 million in mandatory expense, expenses in fiscal year 22, and then a 1% increase into fiscal year 23. The green line shows revenues for the same time period. And if you look at the lines, you go to the far left quadrant of the graph, you can see that in fiscal year 17 and 18, the general fund was balanced. Ongoing revenues equaled ongoing budgeted expenditures. The red and green lines were equal, and they're overlaid on each other in the graph. Beginning in fiscal year 19, adopted budget expenditures exceeded revenue. This created an imbalance or a gap. And you see that notice that that space between the red and green lines is termed our deficit gap. And this imbalance continued in fiscal year 20, declined slightly in fiscal year 21, and would be projected to continue in fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23 without any budget reduction. Next slide, please, Elsa. Closing the gap. So how do we get back to a balanced budget? Well, we can increase revenues or reduce expenditures or a combination of both. So in this chart, we project a 3% budget cut in fiscal year 22. So you see the steep decline from 21 to 22 that represents 3% budget cuts. And we, because we do this, we shrink the deficit substantially in fiscal year 22. And then with organic growth that we project and property tax revenue from new construction and a slight increase in enrollment and tuition in FY 23, we believe we can achieve a balanced general fund budget by fiscal year 23. Next slide, please. Okay, so moving beyond, this is one more chart that I'd like to show you. Here, we once again show a balanced budget projected in fiscal year 23 where expenditures equal a revenue. And that's where the green line and the red line intersect at fiscal year 23. And then we show an amount that would be available for new investment that is projected beyond the base expenditure level projected for FY 23. And again, if you look at that gap, you can see that revenues would grow. And from that base expenditure level in fiscal year 23, given the space between revenue growth and that red line, we have capacity that is available for, for new investment. So I think the future clearly looks bright. Obviously, we're going to recover. We're going to realize additional revenue from several sources. For the general fund, principally property taxes on new construction. But we don't expect that our enrollment, tuition and fees will be at that low level forever into the future. It will grow. And so we have modest assumptions for tuition growth beyond fiscal year 22. Next slide, please. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but this is our traditional sources and uses funds, funds for fiscal year, in this case fiscal year 22. And it includes our property tax levy increase of 13.4 million. It shows a contra revenue that is related to the one-time tuition discounts that the board authorized for the fiscal year 21 budget. So it'll be removed. That's a one-time discount. It'll be removed in the FY 22 budget. And so it's actually an increase as a result of that contra revenue being restored in FY 22. It's down on the expenditure line, you can see our base expenditures. Then the next line, you can see the 3% budget cut in fiscal year 22, mounting to $21.6 million. Also, we are removing $14.5 million in one-time required expenditures that the board approved in fiscal year 21 budget for the student opportunity grants. And then we're adding 5.2 million, which I'll show you in a minute, for mandatory and deferred expenditures into the FY 22 budget. So you come down, if you look at the FY 22 column, you can see that with the 3% budget cut, we're projecting that we'll end up with a general fund uncommitted reserve of $38 million. Next slide, please. Okay, FY 21 and estimated FY 22 additional and required expenditures. If you look at the left side of this chart, it shows the $14.5 million of budgeted expenditures added to the 21 FY 21 budget, scholarships, the tuition discounts, and an additional $400,000 in presidential scholarships for third and fourth semester students that was requested by the college presidents. Side of the chart shows mandatory and deferred expenditures to be included in the FY 22 budget. You'll see some familiar ones there. ASRS rate for employers and employees is increasing for FY 22. And that will require the district to expand an additional $600,000 for that ASRS rate increase. We also have our employee education pay adjustments and our presidential scholarships. EGF stands for Enrollment Growth Formula. And you can see that there is a paren there saying pending. That is because there are continuing discussions on the reallocation equity parity model that has been discussed for a number of years. And whether or not this adjustment is made is dependent on the outcome of those discussions, which we hope to happen soon. There has been, previously, there were 39 faculty positions that were funded out of Prop 301 accounts that over time should be returned to the general fund. These are ongoing expenses that are more appropriate for being funded out of the general fund rather than through Proposition 301 monies. Estrella Mountain is opening its new Arroyo Hall. And so the operating costs for fiscal year 22 are about $600,000. The Phoenix College Tech Institute will be opening, that's another $500,000 for its operating costs. And then 1.5 million to move EMCOR from Proposition 301 account to the general fund of a billion and a half, and that's a total of 5.2 million in required and deferred expenses. By the way, the ASRS rate is moving from 12.22% to 12.41%. And that, again, is a cost to the district of $600,000. Next slide, please, Elsa. Okay, we talked about a 3% reduction in the general fund budget. So question is, where is that, where are those cost savings coming from? So this chart shows. So this chart shows by category and from the colleges and from the district office and district-wide budgets, where those savings are going to be generated. Obviously, the largest category where the biggest savings are going to occur is in eliminating vacant positions. And that will save almost half, well, more than half of the $21.6 million of the 3% reduction. There are no, I'll add at this point, as we look at the situation, we are talking about vacant positions. There are no positions that have been indicated for reduction that currently have employees. So there are no reduction in force numbers that we're looking at at this point in the recommendation for the 3% reduction for fiscal year 22. And then you can see the other categories. Contractual services, ESAs, and professional services combined. We're looking at savings of $2.9 million. And there are other categories such as carry forward that will be eliminated totaling about 1.9 million. There are some accounts that are yet to be determined, some budgets that are yet to be determined, amounting to about a quarter of a percent that the district budget office is currently working on identifying. And again, the grand total, 3%, we plan to take out, present to you a recommendation for reducing the general fund budget for FY 22 by $21.6 million. And those vacant positions amount to a position reduction count of 58.7 positions that would be eliminated or removed from the FY 22 budget. Next slide, please, Elsa. Okay, the first of our good news stories, Proposition 301. Previously, if you recall, we had projected that we would be, we would not have any money this year or next year for funding new projects from 301 monies. But again, sales tax collections at the state level have come, have far exceeded initial projections. And as a result, our share of Proposition 301 sales tax remittances have increased, has increased as well. And so you can see, if you go to the bottom line of this chart, that we're actually going to be in the black in terms of having additional money, as we projected, to fund additional projects out of our Proposition 301 accounts. Next slide, please. This is just simply a graphical representation of that previous chart. And I direct your attention to the gray bars, which show the capacity for the balances or the capacity for new investments in workforce development type projects. Next slide. Okay, the other good news story relates to revenues that we anticipate and expect from Proposition 207 and its passage in the general election that occurred earlier this year. You've seen this slide previously, board members. We have removed the generic years in the projection and replaced them with fiscal years. We would expect to receive, to begin receiving some money from Proposition 207 receipts and remittances to Maricopa by the end of next calendar year and into the first six months of calendar year 22, 2022, and therefore, half year of fiscal year 22 revenue. You can see that we, and these, I'd also backtrack just a step and let you know that these projections are based on the analysis that was done by the legislature, the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. And many consider the analysis and the projections that JLBC did as conservative. So these could also be interpreted as conservative projections. And as you can see, even with conservative projections by fiscal year 26, you know, we could, we could be seeing upwards of 23, 25, maybe even $27 million in revenue from Proposition 207. Of course, these would all be restricted funds, restricted to investment in workforce development, job training, and technology, education, and STEM programs. Next slide. This is our one slide on our capital fund. And I would point out that if you look at the purple bars that shows our ending balances after accounting for all of our resources and our expenditure needs, and you can see beginning in FY 24, those purple bars are negative. This chart does not, does not include any money from the shift of property taxes from the secondary property tax rate to the primary tax rate dedicated to capital as we pay down the 2004 bond issue. So we've got tremendous capital needs. You might recall that our Sightline study had identified $380 million worth of deferred maintenance needs. And obviously, we can't bite that off in one chew. So we're spreading that over a decade or more. Basically, what we're building into the budget is around $20 to $25 million a year for just that, for remedial capital purposes. And then on top of that, we know we're likely to have other capital needs as well. And those are being accounted for in our budgets as well. So given the situation in our Fund VII, our capital fund, we intend to come back in our next presentations with a proposal for continuing the secondary to primary tax shift dedicated to capital for the FY 22 budget. Next slide, please. Okay, we thought it might be prudent at this point to talk a little bit about the CARES Act and how we've been expending the allocations of money to our colleges. As you know, we had two large buckets. One of 40, roughly $42 million, half and half dedicated for student grants and the other half for institutional expenditures related to COVID. And then we also received $1.9 million for aid and assistance to Hispanic-serving institutions. And if you look at the chart, we've done pretty well in expending the money, the minimum money dedicated to student grants. We've spent of the 20.9 million, we've already spent 20.1 million or 96% of that. We've served 34,000 Maricopa students with these grants. If you go to the third block there, institutional allocation, we've spent $7.1 million of the 20.9 million dollar allocation, or 34%. And of course, the Hispanic-serving institutions, we've spent a little less than 60% of that allocation as well. And Kim Grineo is the CARES Project Director for the institutional allocation. She is on the call. And if you have additional questions regarding the CARES money, she's here to answer those. Next slide, please, Elsa. Okay, this is the last slide. And we wanted to include one slide to show you where our expenditure limitation is headed. It's not particularly good. But, but the slide shows is that even with the 3% budget reductions that we will continue to eat away at the expenditure limit carryforward capacity that we've built up over the years since we have been spending below the expenditure limitation until recently. And we've been eating into that capacity. But with the projected declines in both student enrollment and tuition by FY 23, the expenditure limit carryforward capacity will have been reduced by 80% from $332 million in FY 20 down to $65.3 million in FY 23. And, and we, we don't expect that to get any, any better, much better into the future. But as you heard from Darson and Alexis last week, their legislative efforts, combined with help from the other state community colleges, we're not the only community college that is facing this situation. There are others as well throughout the state. We're very hopeful that our efforts in working with the legislature and the governor's office in the upcoming legislative session will, will lead toward relief from the expenditure limitation that we're currently facing. So with that, President Sullivan, that is what I have for this afternoon. And those of us on the call that have worked on the presentation, including Dr. Moore, would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kinto. That's a lot of information, and I appreciate you doing the presentation. Before I move to each person, I want to comment that Mrs. McGrath was able to hear us and has technically been present for our meeting. And, you know, there are technology glitches, but I want the record to reflect that she has been present and will be hopefully able to respond when I call on her. Two questions for the discussion, and then I'll move through the board members. As you're looking at the 3%, can you reiterate how equity is being applied to the 3% reduction throughout the district rather than 3% equally? How is equity entering into that conversation rather than equality?
I'd be, yeah, thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. I'd be happy to, to answer that question. And Dr. Moore can, can help with that as well. Yeah, we, we have been discussing with the colleges the 3% decline. And as we have discussed with the governing board members in the past, there has been an unequal allocation of funds among the colleges. The newer colleges have received less in the way of funding on a per-student basis than some of the others. So as we look at the 3% reduction for those underfunded colleges, we are anticipating that they would reduce their general fund budget by something less than 3%. But that means to achieve the overall 3% reduction, that means that the other colleges and the district office would have to decrease their general budgets by slightly more than 3%. And so we're working out those details now. But that would provide, you know, relief, if you want to consider that, to those underfunded colleges. And the other colleges and the district office would help make up that difference.
Okay, thank you. And there may be more questions on that, but I wanted to make sure that was out there. And then the second piece goes to the compensation philosophy. You said upfront that it wasn't integrated into these budget considerations. And as you move into the next reiteration, I assume that you can offer comment that that would be integrated into our next presentation. Is, is that a correct statement for me?
We, we could certainly do that. And if it's the board's desire, we will do that. And we can come back with at least a couple options on how we might best fund that compensation philosophy and integrate it into the budget. And there are a couple of ways that we have in mind that we might be able to do that while still not significantly altering our path toward a balanced budget.
Okay, well, I know that's going to be a very important item for us to consider moving forward. So want to ensure that as we begin to talk dollars and look at its framing within this budget, that that is in fact in place. So thank you for letting me ask those two questions. So now I'm going to start, as usual, with the board members. And because Mrs. McGrath, I didn't, we didn't hear from her earlier, I will try to start there. And if not, I'll come back to her second. Mrs. McGrath, are you able to talk to us now? And do you have a question or comment?
I've always been able to talk to you. You haven't been able to hear me.
Oh, well, now I can. Thank you. That's great.
I don't know if I, perhaps I wasn't unmuted before. I've noticed that we do not seem to have a savings mentality across the board. For instance, last Christmas, I received an in-first-class mail Christmas card from one of the campuses, printed at campus expense. I really don't think we ought to be, you know, it's a little thing, but it's part of the mindset that I have all this money to spend. And it doesn't matter if this is an appropriate use of government-funded activities or not. And I think everyone should start thinking in terms of, is this a legitimate government expense? I also have in my possession some very nice ballpoint pens that have district printed on them. Some of them have a different campuses printed on them. We do a lot of things that are not worthy of abusing the taxpayers. We, I think we abuse the taxpayers. I'm really pleased with this presentation that Mr. Yekinto presented. But I notice that we are going to be going in the hole, even though it has been pointed out we're losing enrollment. So why aren't we justing expenditures to match with enrollment? I know that's a difficult way to get there. But if we can keep, keep trying to do that, I would really appreciate it. As the enrollment drops, the expenditure should drop. And I think that we need to keep in mind the taxpayers are paying such a heavy burden now that all of these initiatives pass, that we need to lighten the load on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. Did you have a question or at all, or just a comment?
Well, my question is, why aren't we reducing expenditures commensurate with the reduction in enrollment?
Okay, I think that's duly noted then, and certainly part of the ongoing discussion going forward, Mr. Yekinto. With that, unless you have an answer you want to offer.
Well, I think, you know, we, we hear that, we hear that message from Mrs. McGrath and appreciate it. And what we're doing, or at least we're, we're trying to move in that direction. We recognize the reduction in enrollment. And therefore, rather than trying to keep a constant budget, we're looking at reducing our budget to deal with that issue. But over time, you know, our intent is to ensure that we have a balanced budget and to match our resources with, you know, with, with what we need to spend to deliver our services. And we want to match those as closely as we can. And if services are going down, then we want to look for efficiencies and way, and ways to reduce, continue to reduce our budgets. We're not anticipating that. We're anticipating that enrollment, you know, will bottom out, and it will climb again. And so we want to be, we also want to be prepared to deal with that. And so we want to be, we also want to be prepared to deal with that when it happens.
Thank you. Moving on then, Dr. Narini, do you have comments or questions?
Yeah, my head is still kind of spinning from, from all of this. Let's see, I had a couple that I was thinking. So one, one of the biggest sources of revenue is, is tuition. And, you know, we talk about local control or tuition and local control. Do we have any, any thing? Is there anything in here about, for those institutions who are focusing more on recruitment and getting more, you know, increasing their enrollment? Is there anything that will help kind of offset that? I mean, with local control, you know, maybe, maybe it's pens that do bring in the students or t-shirts, because I know our students certainly like the gifts when, when they get them, and it really catches their attention to, to a particular institution. So it's because each, each college is, is going to have their separate outreach programs and outreach policies and things. So do, are we, are we going to take some, some of that into consideration as, as enrollments go up in some campuses more than, than others or vice versa for different programs?
And President Sullivan, Dr. Narini, the answer to that is as enrollment increases and there's a need for commensurate increases in resources, you know, I think that those expenditures will, will occur. It obviously be up to each individual college and the district office and leadership to determine where those spending priorities should take place. You know, we're always going to have resources that are limited. And the whole, the whole notion behind economics is, you know, allocating those resources to the best and highest uses. So I, I think there will be that kind of availability to, to market and to reach out and attract additional enrollment. It'll be a combination of each college working on those activities as well as getting support from, from the district. And we would intend to do that. It's important, clearly, clearly, when we look at the graph that's up on the screen now, seeing the dip in enrollment and over time how enrollment has gone, we need to do things differently so that we can educate our community. And, and we do that by having more students in the door.
Thank you. Yeah, because spending my whole career either doing recruiting or being at the, at the school, having recruiters come in and talk to the students, I can, I really have a, you know, real sensitive part to, to what it takes to get students into the door and enrolled. And so when we talk about the, the compensation philosophy in the next program or the next slide or the next program you're going to, you're going to show to us. So the COLA will be involved in that? Or has, have we talked about the COLA? Is it, is it in this budget here, or are we not looking at that?
And President Sullivan, Dr. Narini, it is, it is not in anything that you saw today. So there's nothing in the data, the graphs that include that either COLA or any other sort of compensation. And as I mentioned to, in addressing Mrs. Sullivan's question, our intention is to come back in the next presentation with a couple of options. You know, one of which could be COLA, one of which could be a stipend. And there are ways that we can look at funding that. And I'll give you a couple of examples. One way, currently, because of the pandemic, we're actually spending less than what we budgeted for FY '21. So that will add to our balance, and we can borrow from that balance that's being generated this year to fund compensation. And then what we would do is in the next fiscal year, we would look at replenishing or restoring whatever we've used this, next year with new revenues that come in the door. Secondly, as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, there are also additional revenue options that we might want to explore depending on how you would want to implement the compensation philosophy with a COLA or with some other mechanism. So we'll come back next presentation with some numbers and with some options.
Well, thank you. I just didn't want all that to get lost in all of the sea of numbers and things here that we, that we have. So I'll try to figure some of this out, but I appreciate the presentation was very, very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Moving on, Mr. Sarr.
Now, first, let me say that to Gary and the staff, this is the best presentation that I've understood in the last 10 years for lots of reasons. But so congratulations and thank you to everybody that put this together. I'm going to focus on enrollment because it has effects on a couple of different things, obviously the financial side. But also, as we lower the amount of tuition, we have to increase the percentage of our expenditure limitation issues. And so I'm looking currently, Gary, at the dashboard for enrollment as of last Friday, which is week minus nine from the start of the second semester. And it's showing an average of about 19% reduction in enrollment for this coming spring over last spring. And that scares the heck out of me, to be honest with you, because we've already lost 30% enrollment since the high point back 10 years ago roughly. And another 20% is 50%. That's half of what our high was. And that's not good, especially when you read about ASU's enrollment increasing, Grand Canyon's increasing, a lot of the private colleges are showing increases in enrollment. And we don't know what that's going to be in next August. But I don't understand how we can possibly be losing enrollment at the rates we are when the population that we're serving is growing, when other members of our competition are increasing enrollment. So, you know, it's not a accounting issue except the results. But we certainly need to look at how we allocate resources, making sure we get the best return on those resources, whether those are physical resources and plant and equipment, or whether those are personnel resources. A 20% reduction in enrollment is just unheard of nationally. There's few, but I don't want to be into that group. So my question, I guess, is, do you see, I guess you said you're holding enrollment level? I'm thinking that's probably a conservative estimate. That's pretty uplifting when I really want to call it. It's just way above what I would consider the plan for next year.
And, you know, to, to, to answer or address that, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, you know, we've got our fingers crossed a little bit on that. I've seen the, the numbers that you're talking about with respect to the spring semester. It is early in registration for the spring. So we're only hoping that it'll get better. Obviously, as we gain more data as the weeks go by, and when we come back in January, we'll present to the board what the, you know, what the most recent data show. But, you know, having said that, there, I am aware that there are significant efforts underway at colleges and with other district employees in calling students and following up on contacts to, to improve our enrollment numbers into the spring semester. So hopefully, hopefully that'll work. You know, and we're fighting against this pandemic as well. And we know that students prefer, and many students prefer to in-person education as opposed to remote. So if we can get out of this pandemic, and it may not entirely happen in the spring, but all the news reports that, that I see with vaccines and everything else, we're very optimistic and that, you know, we trend back up with our enrollment. Will we reach the levels that we reached in FY fiscal year 11? I don't know. But with the focus on, you know, workforce programs and additional revenue that we have dedicated for those purposes, I'm optimistic. I'm optimistic, you know, in terms of the future.
Well, we'll put a cocktail or two on that.
Oh, you got it.
I looked at this really closely in the fall as well. And we're comparing week nine of this coming spring with the same period, same far, same nine week back into the fall semester as well. So we're comparing apples to apples here. And looking at your, looking at your comment about whether students like online or not, Real Salado is looking at a headcount that's 40% more than it was a year ago. In FTSE, 16 and a half percent. And you look at the other high points of this, Scottsdale is looking at almost a 9% increase in head, headcount and 2% increase in FTSE. But on the other end, we're looking at Chandler Gilbert, and I'm not picking on them, it just happens to be the number, their headcount is down 49%, their FTSE is down 40%. And those are, you know, let's face it, Chandler Gilbert is a shining star in colleges. And I'm just, I know you put a good conservative budget proposal in front of us, but this seems to be not that way. And I, I just want to look at what would happen if we did lose 20% of our enrollment in the, in the next fiscal year? And how could we deal with that? It's certainly going to take more than a 3% reduction, especially when we realize that we're probably going to totally deplete, you know, our reserve.
And, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Sarr, yeah, we, we saw those individual college numbers as well, and they do look peculiar. And I am, I am aware that there are some anomalies in those, those numbers, particularly for Chandler Gilbert. So, you know, and I don't, you know, there's, there's, you know, we hadn't planned for that detailed discussion this afternoon, but we can certainly, you know, give some more information about that. I am aware that, you know, we, we did approach Chandler Gilbert, and they did say that there were some, you know, some, some reasons for why their numbers looked so bad this early in, in the registration time period.
If I could interject, I certainly think that is a topic for discussion at a deeper level. And Dr. Gonzalez, you'll make note of that so we can move forward with Dr. Fisher and plan a discussion on this in more detail.
Absolutely, President Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Sarr. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, like I said, everything else, I totally agree with the staff's philosophy on this budget, especially what you mentioned, Mrs. Sullivan, regarding the difference between equitable and equity. I think that's been discussed for a lot of years. And I think it's finally starting to sink in that we probably need to make sure that we're putting money where it gives us the best return. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sarr. Dr. Thor.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I also want to compliment the team on a, a very informative presentation. And I also want to thank you for bringing up the issue of equity and the importance of making sure we're, we're not implementing a strategy here that makes the inequities even greater. Also want to thank you and Dr. Narini for bringing up the importance of considering compensation in our deliberations. I have a number of areas I'd like to either comment on or ask some questions. First is, particularly for the benefit of our new board members, who I believe are listening in as attendees, that the imbalance in our budgets in recent years has been quite intentional. So I don't want it to appear that this is a surprise to us, that we did have very large reserves. And this board did, in certain instances, make a very conscious decision to spin down those reserves. And specifically, I'm citing the transformation agenda where the board committed, what was it, $24 million, something like that, in order to address guided pathways and the reduction in the advisor student ratio and many, many other initiatives. And we also, not that many months ago, made a very conscious decision related to the, the spending around the pandemic. That said, we do, of course, have to address getting back to a balanced budget, but wanted to remind people that that was intentional on our part. If Elsa could bring up the first of the Prop 301 slides. Oh, yeah, that one. Thank you very much. So it was just a couple of years ago when we had very large balances in the Prop 301 monies. And today, as this chart indicates, we still have ending balances in Prop 301, 3.8 million for FY '21, 4.7 million for FY '22. Given that, I do not understand why we are continuing to move Prop 301 funded faculty to the general fund. It seems to me that we have time in the future to address that shift. And to do so in a difficult year like this, it is, is not really necessary. I feel similarly about the move of IMCOR out of 301 over to the general fund. So I would, either if you want to comment or, or go back and think a little bit more about whether this is the year for us to continue to move expenditures out of 301 for the purpose of funding new programs. Then I also want to comment on the Prop 207 funds. And I just caution us to not put more restrictions on ourselves than what the proposition is really spelling out. So I'm disturbed to be hearing words like these are restricted funds. I recognize that Prop 207 does have targeted areas for expenditure, but it doesn't say that we can't supplant some of the expenditures that we're already making in that area using general fund monies where we could start using Prop 207 monies. And then the third area is I want to express my frustration over the fact that you did not present us with the tax shift as the expected action. When this board, and, you know, I, we've talked about this 15 times in the last six months, that back in 2017, I believe, was the year that we first did it, this board made a decision that as the secondary tax was decreasing, that we would increase the primary tax by an amount less than the secondary tax was decreasing, so that there was still an overall property tax decline. And that, that new money, the new primary tax money, And that, that new money, the new primary tax money, would be put aside for capital so that we did not have to do a general obligation bond. That was the decision that was made. And if we don't every year make that shift, we're not going to have the capital funds that we need to operate this district, and we'll be back looking at a general obligation bond. So I really hope that year after year, we're not going to continue to have this discussion, but assume it to be the board's wishes, the board's will, that this is the way we're handling the reduction in the secondary tax. And that concludes my comments, and to the extent that they're questioned.
And this is Sullivan, Dr. Thor. I do, if I could take each of your areas and do them in reverse, starting with the tax shift. Yeah, we're fully intending to come back in the next presentation with a recommendation on shifting a portion of that secondary tax shift. The idea was, in this first presentation, to demonstrate what, you know, what danger we will be in in our inability to completely fund our capital needs. And they're substantial, and they're great. And, you know, we don't want our students sitting in rooms with leaky roofs. We don't have our, we don't want our buildings falling down. We don't want our air conditioning and our systems not to work. So it is important that we find and complete the tax shift over time so that we've got the resources to invest in, in our capital needs. Then the second area was Prop 207. And they're restricted only in the way, in the form that we need to account for the expenditures. We do have a group now looking at the very issue that you brought up, and that is, what might we be able to supplant from the expenditures from the general fund? So we're looking at areas that we can use Proposition 207 monies to provide some relief to the general fund. And we hope to have some of that information available in our next presentation. And then the other one in EMCOR, I'd like to do both that you recommended. Comment, and then I'd like to think about it some more as well. And you mentioned the thirty-nine faculty members that we're now funding in 301 that we want, that have been recommended to be moved back to the general, into the general fund, at least for the last two years. We didn't do it last year. We put in the proposal this year to move, I think, four or five of those positions. Total cost is about four and a half million dollars, if I remember correctly. And there are two, two factors there. The first is that Prop 301 was initially thought of as seed money for workforce development projects, not to continue with funding ongoing employee or faculty costs. But having said that, the other reason for moving is to provide even more headroom for even greater investments in Proposition 301 programs as seed money. The idea was that these programs would eventually be institutionalized or brought in to Proposition, I'm sorry, the general fund, you know, once they've been fully established. So that's my initial comments on, on that. You also mentioned EMCOR. And EMCOR, I believe, had a shelf life of like five or six years, and that, that, that has expired. And so in working with the chief of workforce development and economics, Darcy Renfro, we have been discussing and talking about how we can repurpose parts of EMCOR to be more robust in the work that they do and serve the entire district and complement the work that the colleges do in integrating and communicating with our industry partners. So it is something we've talked about for a couple of years now. And clearly, we probably want to think about it some more now that you brought that issue to the forefront. And, but that, you know, we'll go back, we'll do some more thinking about it and, you know, come back with additional information and recommendations in January.
Thank you, Mr. Kento. That's, that's all very helpful. On EMCOR, perhaps I misunderstood. So they were receiving in, they are receiving in fiscal year 21, two million dollars. By removing it from the Prop 301 monies for fiscal year 22, is that two million dollars now being, now part of general fund? In other words, is there a commensurate increase in the general fund expenditure of two million dollars?
There would, there would be, we would move one point five million from the EMCOR into the general fund. EMCOR also generates revenue as well, which is actually accounted for in Fund II. But the revenue has, has not been sufficient to cover the totality of EMCOR expenses. But nevertheless, you know, we're looking at the utilization of that Fund II revenue as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Thor, do you have any other comments?
I do not. Thank you.
You're welcome. I do, I had some questions. You brought up one area that I had a series of questions on, and it was before my time. But as I was looking at the chart on page eight and began from fiscal year eighteen to see that growing gap from balance, my question was, what shifted? Was it the philosophy? Were there new programs? What did we do with tuition and taxes at that time? So I think that you raise many questions that merit perhaps deeper discussion than just a Q and A for us to grapple with and understand that from the new board members who will join us, to those of us who have been here for these discussions the last couple of years. So perhaps as we move forward, and we haven't heard from Mrs. Nguyen yet, but I'll come to you in a minute, Kathleen. It will be imperative for us to have opportunities for those deeper discussions in the next presentation. So with that, Ms. Nguyen, please go forward.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you for getting this to us now. I appreciate the effort and the time that's gone into this. Obviously, the enrollment numbers are problematic. I also think we do have to understand that we've had a year that has been like no other year in the world, let alone education. As we focus forward, though, I, I think EMCOR, and I, I don't quite understand everything that you were saying about the money and the money running out, and has provided a really wonderful connection to our industry partners. And as we go forward, I think where we fit in as a community college with those that need training and workforce training, we are that vehicle, and that should hopefully help us with some of our enrollment. I'm also confident that when we can return students to the campus, that some of that will be adjusted. But in the meantime, I appreciate the cuts that have been done. And I'd have to echo what Mrs. McGrath said, that, that we have to do, as painful as it is, we might have to do some more cuts before we recover from this. I hope that this is, don't have to. But I, I think that we can't continue to have deficit spending. The other thing, we don't know how much money 207, there are some really big question marks as I'm looking at your budget, Gary, and I think you've done a good job of projecting, but we won't really know till we do. So I think my, and this is just a question, fiscal year 21 ends when? Or when does it start?
It started July, well, it started July 1st of this year, runs through June 30th of calendar 21.
So we're not into that? Okay, so then fiscal year 20, which we're currently in with the lowest enrollment numbers on that chart, correct?
We're currently in fiscal year 21, fiscal year 20 ended June 30th of 20.
Okay, I don't, can you, I'm sorry, can you put up the chart of the enrollment? Oh, because that's probably what's confusing. Okay, so we're, we're current, we just completed fiscal year 20, and we're currently in fiscal year 21. Is that what you're?
Yes, that's correct.
So could the enrollment go up in January? Could that be a higher number?
It, it could be.
But that's a projection.
Yeah.
Okay.
It could be lower. What we're assuming is that it's going to be, you know, from the fall semester, it could be, could be higher in spring, could be lower. Right now, we're saying it's going to remain at fifteen percent down.
I think that there's got to be a place where, because what you're saying right now, I believe it was twenty-four percent of our tuition covers the expense of the college, and seventy-four, seventy-five percent is funded by tax dollars. And if I'm the taxpayers, and I'm seeing that we don't have students coming to this college, and yet taxpayer is paying the biggest burden, which, you know, I think that there needs to be some kind of adjustments and maybe have a place where, okay, only seventy percent, and we need to have at least a thirty percent covered by tuition. I, I don't know that, I'm making those numbers up, that may not even be close to what it could be. But there's got to be a more equitable, I would love to go back and look at fiscal year 11 and see what the tuition costs versus the taxpayer contribution was. Does that make sense?
Well, we could certainly, we could certainly get that, get those numbers for you. I don't know what it would look like, since it's way before my time as well here. But I'd be happy to put that together.
Well, I don't, I don't want to give you extra work to do. I just think that we have to really look at what income are we bringing in? We're a business, essentially. I know we're, we're not, but we, we are providing education. And what are, what are we, what revenues are we generating versus the expense to run the colleges? And I, I, I just think we have to kind of look at it through a business lens. And, and, and what's exciting is we do have new streams of revenue coming in, and I think that that can help offset some of the costs. The other thing, if we, we know our faculty wants raises, and we know our faculty wants cost of living adjustments. And if I look at this, I want to be able, if it's feasibly, financially feasible to do that. But what I'm looking at right now is of concern. And I, I, I think we just, this is a great first step. I just don't think we're quite where we need to be to do the things that we've talked about doing in the last six months. So I'm glad that we're on it ahead of time. So I appreciate the work that you've done, and I think we'll just, if we can send you more questions after this. But I, I really do appreciate this, this effort. And, and I, I would also, in conjunction with this, look to see what money we're spending for marketing or what the plan is for, between now and first quarter, or, or second quarter of January 2021. What are we doing to engage in, besides calling all the students? What, what else are we doing maybe with the high schools and some other places to get students back into our, our college system? So I think that's more of a comment than a question, but thank you.
And, and thank you, thank you as well. And please, and this, this would go for all of the board members, to the extent that there are other questions that you'd like us to address, you know, please email those to us, to me, and then, you know, we can endeavor to provide answers.
And to that note, what I was going to suggest also, given that we're approaching six o'clock, and we had allocated an hour and a half for this discussion, essentially, is we could follow the protocol that we did similarly with the FAC presentation. And that is if board members can send questions, so all of us know what the questions are, and then we can be insured that when we meet at the next budget presentation, we will have the opportunity to discuss the answers to those out loud, so everyone can hear that. Also, this budget will be voted on by additional, or two new members who have not had an opportunity to participate with us in the discussions. So the next one certainly would include them, and we may have even new question, newer questions for, with their point of view. So with that, I think we've covered a lot of ground. I agree that the presentation has been thorough, and there's been a lot of good information. I do believe that this allows us to even go deeper in understanding the framework for this and appreciating where we're intending to go. Budgeting and enrollment do go hand in hand, but there are separate discussions in many ways. So as we commented a little earlier in this meeting, Dr. Gonzalez will be arranging some further discussion about the highs, hows, whys, whats, whens of enrollment and its framework. And then there may be other things to consider in a budgeting framework, depending on what priorities we see going forward after we move into the next calendar year and conclude the fiscal year 21 in preparation for fiscal year 22. So unless there's a, oh, you know what? Jalissa, you must have some comment or point of view, and you've been patiently listening through all of us. Do you have anything that you'd like us to consider or to think about for the next workshop? I see you're there, Jalissa. Okay, I don't see her being unmuted, so with that, Jalissa, certainly, if you have any comments. Oh, there you are. Good. Okay. Please, go, go ahead. And we're back on mute. Okay. So let's ensure that if you have any questions, that they're part of the greater discussion next time, at least. So with that. Yes, please.
This is Dr. Nguyen. I just want to make one, one quick comment about the discussion that we just had. As somebody, as somebody who works directly with students and directly with the colleges and their outreach efforts, I don't want anybody to be left with the impression that, that the outreach efforts of the colleges, the people there are sitting on their hands, they're doing an excellent job going out and, and working with students and trying to, and reaching out to students to, to get them involved, to get them to apply and, and enroll for, for the next year. We, I mean, like I said, somebody who works directly with them in my, in my day job, you know, we've had, you know, Dr. Miller contact our school, and I know he's contacted a number of schools for the honors program at Phoenix College. And, and we've had contacts from, just because of our location, from Glendale and Ostraya and Gateway as well, who's, who's reached out to, to our students in an effort to, to do the recruitment and outreach. So I hope nobody was left with the impression that, that the outreach groups in, at the colleges are, are sitting on their hands. To go to Mrs. Nguyen's point, she's right, this is a year like no other. And I, I've seen students, the students that I work with and the students that, that I, I see in our district going through a difficult time, and colleges, it's just, with, with the pandemic, has slid down on their priority list considerably. So, yeah, so that, I just wanted to make that point to, to, to say that, you know, we are talking about, we aren't talking about apples to apples when we're talking about Rio and the other, and the traditional schools. Rio has always worked with online students, whereas the rest of the campuses haven't. Traditionally, the students there haven't been traditional online students. So again, I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody realizes that, that the colleges are doing a magnificent effort in a, in a really tough time to, to reach out to the students.
Thank you, Dr. Narini, for that reminder, and I'm sure we all, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. When I've commented on enrollment, there's been no intention to be critical, but it's always an opportunity to think about what more. always an opportunity to think about what more we can do, and someone else wants to speak here. So who's that?
That was me, I'm sorry about earlier.
No problems, Jalissa, go ahead.
So just kind of speaking on enrollment as well, I just wanted to consider, like, you know, I know we're trying our best to get our numbers back up, and, you know, kind of like Dr. Narini said, it is, it is a year like no other, and it's very difficult, especially with a good handful of students being, those students that learn best in the classroom, that are interactive and stuff like that. So it's been a huge transition. I know myself, I'm a person, I, last spring semester, I started a semester, and I was like, okay, this is the first semester, I'm not going to take any online classes, because I know myself, and I know I'm not good in those classes. Come around back after spring break, and it's like, oh, everything's online. So that was the best transition for myself. And I know I have been struggling in some classes online, because they're not all similar, they're not all the same when it comes to the way that they format it, or just the way about how teachers go about it. Some are very strict, some are very lenient, some, you know, kind of walk you through every step, versus some are just kind of like, here's everything. And I know they're trying their best, because, you know, I bet you a lot of those teachers themselves didn't sign up to be an online teacher. But I know a lot of students that I have been talking to, some of them, you know, have been able to get the hang of it, and some of them have honestly told me, you know, I think I might just put off my classes until, you know, this whole COVID thing calms down and we're actually back in the classroom. So I know we're very anticipated to see what those numbers will be like next semester. But that's just kind of a little bit of perspective from the student point of view.
Well, that's a very important perspective, and thank you for sharing that. Do you have any particular comments or questions on the budget?
That was a lot of information. But I didn't want to say that it was, you know, really good and really put together. I found it very easily to kind of follow along, even though there was a lot of numbers thrown in there constantly. It was very displayed well, and, you know, it was quite some insight.
Well, if you have any questions after you, if you choose to go, you know, or after you peruse more material, please offer those questions up in an email, and we'll forward those either to Elsa or Dr., or Mr. Yekinto. And then from there, we will have them answered definitely at the next presentation. So with that, my last question is, when is, when are you anticipating presenting again, Mr. Yekinto?
Again, thank you for the question, Ms. Sullivan. We're, we were planning sometime in January, so we haven't, we haven't firmed up to date with you yet, but it'll be sometime that month.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So with that, I'm going to conclude the work session, but remind everyone that there is a board meeting scheduled for 6:30, which is in about 25 minutes. And with that, please remain connected through this link. There is no new link for the board members. And I will convene us at 6:30, where we will then engage the regularly scheduled board meeting. Do you have any closing comment, Dr. Gonzalez, before I, we have everyone mute?
President Sullivan, yes, just, just a really quick comment. And I just wanted to let the board know in, that we are clearly concerned about enrollment, and we're doing quite a bit, and we're trying to be as innovative as possible. And it's, and it's hard to explain what's happening. We chalked some of it up to the pandemic, and it's difficult to explain why university enrollment has gone up while we've gone down. I suspect that, you know, we're, we're an open access institution, the students that we draw are quite different from those that are ready to go straight to university in most instances. And especially during a pandemic, if we draw upon the students that come with the greatest challenges economically and being first generation, it would make a lot of sense that we're seeing an even sharper decrease. And what we're experiencing at Maricopa is very similar to what community colleges are experiencing across the country. I think nationally, it's in the, the 10 to 12% down across the country. So it's not unique, and we're working hard. On the flip side of that, I'd like to also remind us all that for the taxpayers who, who put into the, the Maricopa Community College District, it's a solid investment. For every $1 that a taxpayer puts in the Maricopa system, the taxpayer sees $4 and I think 20 something cents back as a, an investment. We also have a $7.2 billion impact on the economy in the state of, in, in the state of Arizona, mostly in Maricopa County. And one in 27 jobs in Maricopa County have been touched in one way or another as a result of what Maricopa Community College District does for Maricopa County. We still serve nearly 200,000 students. An article just came out that the three universities combined, for the first time, reached 300, 200,000 students. So I, I welcome them to that club. And I just, I just keep, ask you guys to, to keep that in mind. And, and as Dr. Narini said, we're, we're working really hard at this, and we know that there's room for improvement, and we're going to continue to move forward and do our best job. So thank you for the opportunity to provide those comments.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. And again, thank you to Mr. Moore, Mr. Yekinto, Ms. Grunio, and all of the rest of the team that put all of this information together. So with that, I will sign off and, and regroup again at 6:30, but I won't be calling out a money song at 6:30. So we'll just move forward. With that, talk to you soon, everyone. Thank you.